Yeah.
Sure got really bad, didn't it?
Put me in line.
That's a story.
Yeah.
Did they have a hill?
They have first time.
Oh, oh, that's good. All the meeting to order, can I have a roll call please? Mayor Wendy.
Here.
King.
Here.
Banker.
Here.
Mass. Van Campen.
Here.
Nederhoff.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Brondite.
Here.
Van Zuiden.
Here.
Very good. And if we stand and see the pledge of allegiance from the flag is right to the front of the guys who've been in the positions. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As far as I know, I don't think there's any recognition of our peers. There are none, we will go on. Now we have communication from visitors and this is just if anyone wants to speak to the council that is not on the agenda. Well, okay, then we go on to presentations. And the first up is Sundance Solar.
Yeah, Bill French is here with Sundance Solar and I asked him to come to answer any questions for the council. What we're talking about is the 33 acres that they like an option to buy in our industrial center. And Bill has asked they buy or lease, it's kind of where we're at right now. So if you have any questions for Bill, Bill, if you want to kind of give them a little bit of background on that place.
Right, so this is, we're talking about the property down there, industrial part. We came to you now a couple of times, first time was for a purchase agreement and that was for 20 acres. And we went ahead and executed that with you. So we have that, so we have an option to purchase 20. And then I came back because that wasn't large enough to do a co-located site, so we could only do two megawatts on it, but we left four. And so we came back and talked to you about purchasing additional 13 acres. So that's where the 33 acres comes from. And these are projects that we would put into allocation. So the way the program is going to work is that if we have a large backlog or waitlist of projects, we get to choose which ones we will put into the allocation. And these would be part of that allocation going forward, so these projects would get built. Kind of the previous how, you know, went to a waitlist, went to a lottery, and then there was speculation, you didn't know if you're going to go forward or not. I can tell you that these projects go forward.
You know timeframe?
Probably in 23, early 23, spring of 23. It'll take us a while to get through all the necessary permitting, but it could be as early as fall of '22 this year.
But money's there.
Or you.
Money is.
The money of the state is there, yes.
Okay, that's.
Yes. Where are we at? We're still just on an option to purchase. Yeah, so that's the way it started, you know, as we came in, we took over the project from Matt grid, that was an option to purchase. So we just followed along with that same formatting. When was that option up?
June.
Yeah, it's correct, I believe it's up in June. So you would just ask if that's going to be in the future fashion? Either that or we pull trigger and go forward and buy it. Yeah.
But tonight you're asking for 13 more acres.
That is correct, yes. And that's what I showed you, I kind of remember when that was. Was it November review was here?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're still on interview that day, they all went together at some point in time. But yeah, so I'd just like to know if we could move forward with that. I'm kind of waiting, I haven't pressured Dan to let me know, so.
Dan, is there that many acres available?
There is, the 33 actually. So right now, the comment that they have the option on is up in the center, right here, which will be right up in the middle, kind of those two there. And then the 13th, they're asking to add is kind of a little L-shaped down there below.
So is that a conflict with what Dan's coming to us with?
No.
Not at all?
No.
Okay.
No, this was already there before what Dan was looking at. Dan will be.
Are you wanting an answer to that?
I would love an answer. We need to file the projects that we're going to allocate by March 14th.
Okay.
That is two weeks from now.
So 20 that. $15,000 acres, right, it'd be 15,000 an acre. And one of the things to consider is, and Bill, Bill, I had asked him about lease. And that's something Dan needed, I have some background on this. And they would look at a 25-year lease with, what, two five-year extensions I brought per email. Then the rent would be about 1,200 acres per year at 2% S4.
So what's that a total a year?
Well.
Help us.
Yeah, so I got that, yeah.
Okay.
To start off at about 39,600 a year.
Okay.
And then it grows at 2% a year. Now, so the question for you, the question really for the city is, do you want, do you want a big chunk of money now or do you want it to trickle in over time? Is it a time value money question?
The other question I have though is that industrial area was developed and we want, we would love employees out there. So once you build, there will not be employees that take care of that?
Oh, it'll be taken care of, sure.
I know it'll be taken care of, but I mean, we won't have people driving to Fulton to go to their job.
No, there won't, there won't be any employee, there won't be any sales tax.
Okay.
So the property tax, we figured it'd be around, well, for the 20 acres, I found it was closer to about 13,000 a year. Which obviously schools would if it wasn't a tip to forget that, but uh, so it's not a lot of money. Not as far as sales tax stuff, they don't get very much.
Are we going to require to put a road through there?
No. Now his, theirs, they wouldn't require any roads for theirs. That, it just had that number, so over 25 years, you'd be looking at about 1.3 million.
That's correct, 1,268,000. So as opposed to purchasing for 195,000, well, that could pull 33 acres.
Right.
So for tonight, you're just asking approval for the 13 additional? Yes, we already have a purchase agreement with you.
That's right, so, and then that 13 additional would just tie in to the original option that would come due in June.
I think I asked for a year, so it would stretch a little longer, but. But so at that time, we could make, between now and then, with that option, we, we could be in talks of whether that was probably the one. You don't need an answer of that. You mean if you just like a lease instead of purchase?
Right.
Or how's it?
We could do it that way.
I'll tell you, a lease is a pretty long document, there's probably a lot to go through.
Yeah, so we, we wouldn't answer that, I think, and I know there's no way.
So.
For sure.
Yes, and look that in a minute. I'm beating up on it, we haven't gone back and forth.
Bill, just for clarification, you're just adding to what is a promise of. Right, that's what we, we have a 20, we have 20 acres that we have an agreement and option, you guys got first, first option to buy, right?
They can exercise themselves.
Right, right.
Those are there.
And you're asking us for 13 additional acres, but to start at a different time.
It just had to be a separate agreement, so not to confuse you, I was just trying to keep them separate. Is that, you know.
And that comes due in June?
And, and the thing obviously to consider would be the lease side, because they are want to do that, you know, or, you know, or not, so.
Well, we just, I don't know, we just don't have a lot left there and I'd like to get the most.
What?
Well.
Question, I guess.
Yeah.
Questions for council? We don't need it, but can we do it? Do the job, because we do that for all I guess.
That's, that's my question.
That's where the road at.
Yeah.
Just the other way, yes, too, it would be another difference. If you did a lease, you end up with it at the end of the day. It's your property at the end of the day, you know, when a project is completed, then you go.
Right.
25, 35 years.
I did the numbers on the lease and depending what interest rate you use, it's actually, it's more valuable for acres today against today's dollars and. Depends what rate you're going to do or what you want.
Yeah.
Because if you knew, take the 15,000, the rate's going to go up, you take this, take that.
Everybody needs a crystal ball, don't they?
And I don't know yet. Have we had? How long will we try that practice though? One, two, eight or nine, four years. Like, let's still be honest. Yeah.
Dan, I'm going to ask you.
I don't have a vote here.
But you do, because you do look at the budget, you know of the value of the land, that'll be the rule.
What I, what kind of intrigued me and I guess what little I know about this stuff is bringing, the lease part of it seems more intriguing to me. Now, like Bill said, it's back years of that, the end of the day, I know that's a long way from here, but over the longevity, you're going to get that money back plus some. And possibly have the property back, you know.
Bill, do you have longevity and keeping land like that for that 25 years? I mean, you know, have you, have you even ever had a piece of property?
Well, I've been in business 20 years, so I couldn't even answer that, yeah. But the, the question is, do we have longevity? The absolute interest is yes, because of the way these are funded, they get paid out over the length of time, so it's really sort of benefit to hold on to them to keep them. So, yes. The lease will say that, right? Absolutely.
I don't want that after so many, after those years to another timeframe again.
Well, at that point, the lease has no more options, so we have to come back. I wouldn't, somebody else would come, I'll be gone.
Some of them have options to do that.
35 years, I got one example, right, after first initial timeframe to extend that. So the other, the 25-year term is set, the option is that are benefit to extend. And extend one more time, so go to 35 years. At that point, the lease cannot be extended anymore without complete renegotiation, which puts it back in hand, you don't want it then.
How long are, how long are they good for? What is panel supposed to last with some?
Panels, you know, there weren't too many manufacturers, 20 to 25 years, and even at that point, they thought about 80% of their production capacity left in them. They degrade, but very slowly.
So say, okay, if we lease, say, you know, 25 years, and at the end of the 25 years, you're saying that you want, make a lease again for 25 years, correct?
No, I'm saying we will lease for 25 with, with an option to extend two more times, 5 years, for 10 years forward.
Okay.
At that, at the end of 35 years, we have this.
But if, say the city would decide after 25 years that we don't want to lease it no more, we want it all out, how would that go?
They would have the option.
Yeah.
35 years. Typical lease is 25 plus 55. And they would have that. They want the equipment at 35 years. The equipment, it's at our expense to remove it all and remediate the site back, which is, you understand. Is there, is there any options that may be assured? I still don't think, so that was my question, would you want an answer almost on whether or not we want to lease it to you tonight?
He wants.
Because that's. Because we did give the option. Yeah, so, so the question isn't anything over a buy or a lease right now whatsoever.
Well, the 20, the 20 acres lease already got that.
Yeah.
That was already done by now.
Right.
The 13 is the other.
But we're talking.
And, and he's willing to lease or buy on the 20 acres, right?
Correct.
And the option then on the 13, the other addition.
But I mean, we're talking over lease or buy right now when we're really not even close to any of that decision.
Right.
I see the eye of the actor bar. Yeah, that's the one, yeah, that's all we need to talk, yeah, we're interested in selling here.
And now you need, yeah, you just need to consider it and move on.
Well, that can't be on tonight.
It isn't going to be going on tonight.
No.
Publish that in a list and pay for the next. That was any, nobody submitted any proposals. We're doing two. I mean, once that decision by you guys is made, either to lease or to sell, we can move, will move as quickly as possible, obviously with the city attorney to work our way to the lease. We've done this before, he's done it before, I'm sure, so we all know where the hitches are. There's, it usually ends up being five things associated, or less, since what we learned was that it's usually pretty quick.
Well, Dan, now, he's asking for 33, right? So told him. Dan Dolan's asking for 30, right? Do we have any other acreage out there?
A little bit, yeah.
We still have, okay.
A whole lot of it.
Okay. All right.
There's 77 total.
Okay. That's, okay. Well then, Bill, we're going to give it our best efforts to come back to you with an answer. We don't have it as an action item on the agenda tonight. So is there any other questions that anybody has for Bill, because now is the time to ask.
What's E on, is that so rich, is that?
Is it on there?
So range you true for. Correct, E under actual.
What is? I'm sorry.
Oh. Yeah. We decided not going to do that.
It's just going to be discussion.
Are you be able to move an ordinance, this was noticed and everybody make a.
Nobody, no.
You have, you're cleared to, to pass an ordinance or lease. Tonight, just, so what's the timeframe for you guys?
By next month.
By next month.
By, by our next meeting.
Which is.
The 4th. Fourth month.
Uh, March, which is beyond the 14th.
So we would need.
If not, I'll be honest with you, if not, we're going to just put in one project, not two. And today are our legalities, right now you have 20 acres that you optioned to us, we can fit a two-megawatt project.
That's okay.
We can fit a two-megawatt project in, so if you don't, can't make a decision, we're just going to cut and not do the 13 acres because it already's up on. We move for the 20 acres on a two-megawatt. We could be in here and there's no say in motion to approve, we could make. Well, you could approve subject to an ordinance speed. Yeah. The pass, but.
We still have the capacity.
But you could, you could give him an idea of what we're going to do. That he could get that idea of how you're going to vote. I'm sorry, I feel like there's pressure on how I really do that, we've been trying to talk about this for a lot of time, so he kind of all of a sudden get up to the deadline. I don't, I don't like to do this, I guess, kind of what happened. We just need to pass a ordinance to prove that so we're purchasing.
I'm going to, like, what do you feel about this?
Okay with that. The option is one thing that worked out for us.
Okay, so you're okay, okay.
Should, should it be opted to purchase or lease, then you could still consider that?
Yes, that's.
Okay, we go. Strong point here, so.
We just want a 13.
I, I have simple needs.
Okay, we'll put that back here.
Since he's here, can we move to either E then to get?
Yep. So we need a motion to approve. Okay. But to lease or buy, we need to put that in there. An additional 13 acres.
So we're tying it into the same?
Say, he wants, he wants a sector.
I know he wants that, but I was trying to ask, that's our question, it's not who we want. And certainly you can, we could amend the lease to add the additional, we could amend the original purchase agreement, add the 13, we could do that. Or can we just give you a second?
That's.
So you want him to buy 13, all or nothing? Because otherwise, there's two contracts, he could choose to buy the 20. Right, so, I think it better just amend it. And link that together. Current agenda, but we have to pass the ordinance.
Okay.
And then would we need to run that out through June or do you want to make it a year?
No.
So they'll run, they'll run together and we'll amend it and be able to do.
So you'll have to split it too. Well, could we split the difference or whatever, but yeah, a little more time would be helpful, but it's really, I'm not going to push down. That would be one way to do it, is to simply amend the purchase, you could weigh up the 20 acres to add the additional 13 acres.
That's.
But at the sometime, maybe, you know, call it July 1 or something, who leaves your date, then.
Okay.
And we'll know a lot more, obviously, by then, we will come to you and say, we're going to go to shovel the ground and that. I mean, we've already been out there, Dan, though, we've done soil borings, we've done all the environmental, it's very roll.
Okay, so you're asking instead of June, you want July 1st, it'll be done?
Yeah, the option to purchase either expires, July 1 or I come back to ask for another, and that passes more. It puts it in, it's putting it really in your favor.
You can't. No, I don't, okay, Bill, give me the permit.
With the motion to direct, maybe repair and ordinance to purchase, to amend the existing contract, add 13 acres, I assume is describing, so they.
Yeah.
I could probably. Make sure it's, the lease for.
43. Yeah. Yes, and so July 1st.
Yes, or July 1st.
Okay. Down there, and you go.
Good.
Okay. And Keith, are you still going forward?
Yeah.
Okay, second? That's it. I'll second. I think.
Here's the lease.
Keep us for a second. Okay, and roll call. Van Campen.
Yes.
Van Zuiden.
Yes.
Mass. Nederhoff.
Yeah.
Brondite.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Hunt.
Yes.
Banker. Now we go on to Charles Dexter Cemetery right away.
The math, there's a brief letter from me.
Yeah.
One of the things that I really appreciate about Fulton Cemetery, it's 175 years old, and our first cemetery is buried there. We are still in the same cemetery. You know, years ago, Stan Bealmer, who was the township supervisor at the time, had the vision to buy all that land from the Connor family. So the new section where most of Protestants are being buried now was land that he purchased. You know, there's four pieces there, if you're up in that cemetery, my parents are buried in the first section, and we're ready building up the third section, and there's one more section to go. Then on the other side, what was formerly Calvary Hill, has quite a bit of space left. But I would, whenever possible, I, I recommend to the township officials that we acquire additional land contiguous to our current land whenever possible. Now, if you look at this map what Dan prepared for, we've got a long strip, you see, in, in campus, and bordered by the blue, is that strip of roadway. That's a 66-foot strip, there's about an acre there, and if you see the roadway, that goes up to the tall hill where we have the flag. So this is on the other side of the tall hill, and I would estimate that there's probably 40 to 50 years worth of burial space there. And generally, what we do is we, we fill up the space before, we wouldn't open this up until that fourth section fills up. And so, it, it sits there growing wild trees, and I don't think the city will ever have any plans for it, so I'm asking that the city, and I'm asking the county township, county trustees, approve this request. That we have that heated over to us, so we'll have additional burial space for the future.
You have questions for Charlie?
One more thing, the way I vision this, that's a 66-foot strip, and our roadways are generally 90 feet wide, so I would envision that a roadway would go right down the middle, we'd make it a one-way roadway. And then it'd have easy access to everyone who wanted to visit there.
Decide to do this for vacation ordinance for that section. You own both sides, so we make it, we have it all.
Or you mean the roadway?
Yeah. It's actually, rather than E, it's called a vacation ordinance.
Well, let's have some discussions, I know we could put it on next month's agenda.
We're fairly certain there's no utilities in there, so we'll level check that, be sure, we know we have now. That was my question. So we'll have that answered.
And really, it is a vacated alley kind of way, isn't it?
It's a roadway.
Right.
It's not vacated yet, but.
No, no, but I meant, we don't use it, it's, there's no road there.
Right now, it's just a, just a wooded area, it's all just. What's the city's policy, they pay the attorneys, you bill and they work for us. It's, we had a number on that, we were asking, it wasn't the 1,500.
No.
It was, it was.
I thought it was.
It was under 500 and all that. Which I assume you guys would be willing to pay for it. We don't give any talent from that stance, it's just.
And the township does, just agree to stay for that amount, so. That sounds like a positive meaning. So we will have it, I think we're getting head nuts all the way around, and we'll have it on the agenda to approve next month, okay? All righty, go on to Dan Dolan, you're up.
Thank you, yeah, we'll talk here tonight. I want to start out with an update over to the session, now we have 28 workers, and we're probably going to be taking on four more to do full Sunday, without doing half, half day. four more to do full Sunday, without a half, half day Sundays. It's a struggle, but it's worth the thing for that, that's how it works. The industry is basically. The truth is it's being monetized, so all the big operators, they have the energy cultivation centers. Illinois, in the initial licensing, about 20 cultivation centers for the entire state. The, in the city of Denver, there's 1,000 cultivation centers in Colorado. So they set up, I think it was a very poor choice, because they control, they form their own association, so this. What is happening is a lot of the dispensaries have just folded and sold out of the cultivation hours. So I'm one of the two knuckleheads that left as mom and pop, that's why I'm so motivated to get a cultivation center, and we, we've proven to be, that it's a very good place to do business. Mr. Dykstra there, we've had some, we've had some tittatays, how, how can we make things better, so, you know, we got a good guy there. So I'm very motivated to do the cultivation center. I originally used a number of 25 people, and they're saying at different points, we could be in the 40s, so I'm upping that. Which I think meets the intent of why we put together dip districts and enterprise zones to, to try to see, see companies get started as a developer. They've been dip districts for over that 20 years now, and it's, it's a tool to mitigate risks. So it's, several years ago, I can't even remember the first time we put the option together. So we put it together, the state had problems with issuing licenses, which is an ongoing thing. They gave us a date, we extended it, they, they extended it again, but here's another day, we said, I, I think we extended three times, that's my memory. So Dan shared with me that the council's getting not excited, not excited, and so I was like, all right, that, that works. In January, I got COVID, I was sick as a dog, I called the mayor, sent out your message, and I said, I'm just gonna go ahead and buy it. We didn't talk for another week, I think I went back to sleep, and a week later, we got a purchase offer over for a meeting, so. And it was ironic, I was looking at the world just the same way as the solar panel guy. We had 18, like something, and then when we went up to 30. So I'm asking, I'm ready to buy, I mean, you don't have the stomach for extending another option. Because I'm just asking, there's considerations, we put it in at a lower price, if I buy the original at the lower price, and the additional at a higher price, it's just an ask. I'm, I'm motivated to be here, I wanna create jobs. I'd rather put the extra money into buildings, because there'll be several million dollars that I have to put out there. So that's my, and I'm just asking for consideration on, if we get it on the old price, I know I missed it by several days, so you don't have to. But I'm asking if we could, and then the additional, and we pay the higher price, so that's what I'm asking for. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And is your higher price 15,000?
That's, yeah, but Dan said that, that's always.
And our original was 10,040, if I.
That's actually correct.
Okay, and that was at the 18. And I will tell you, he was very sick. I, in fact, I, I should have sent him to Dan, I should have said, Dan, he called, I dropped the ball on this one night. Because he was like six days within that contract time, and he was so sick, he couldn't even make a sentence come together. I go, you, you need to go rest.
That's all right, I think I just went back to sleep for a week.
And he had COVID, so I'm just thinking, you know, that that would be a nice consideration.
It's just an ask. So 18 the original, and how many additional?
12.
Well, yeah.
So what, so we'd be, basically, we're 12 acres, then 15, 180.
That's what I'm asking.
180 dollars, and then the other would be 190, 100.
It would be close to 200 or something.
Yeah, so the way his property would look over here would be, we'd rather leave aggregate. So the road, we still need this road, and we have to get this down at least to this property, because this is where I think our main road would be starting, is that what?
Well, you said it was on both sides.
Right, I understand, but, and you can put it wherever, but we have to at least get into there. So his property would be down here, this would end up being around 12 acres here. And then, look, we have the 20 here, which would be sunvested, and it's kind of L, so Dan's, the other side would run, it kind of comes through here like this.
That's how you show it, it's just, it would be both sides of the road.
So, but we, we would leave this for access for the street.
And you're agreeing to put, that's good that we put the road through there, that's okay.
Right now, I have no idea.
Right, okay.
Well, we would, we would be trying, we wouldn't bring the road all the way.
To, to the end, Dan, or just?
Yeah, we, what we would do is probably either or, and Eric can give us some better numbers, but right now, we're, we're about to here, we're gonna add another 300 feet to here, so probably maybe more cost effective to come from the north.
Isn't that where you chose it to come from?
Well, you tell, we didn't even, you tell the sewer, or what is it? No, there won't be any sewer, I mean, yeah, there's no sewer out there, and there, there is water up here, you know, but.
Okay, I, I.
Probably need, honestly.
Will there be sewer eventually down there?
No, I wouldn't see it ever happening.
Okay.
Not cost effective. We found out it'd be a million dollars to get it to this point, just a lift station, and that was several years.
How far, how far away is sewer?
Oh, way more than, this is 30.
Okay. So everything down there is something in that quadrant, okay. That, that, that works, like, I, I didn't realize that, because everybody else there is on something, every building there is on something.
Yeah, yeah, they're all, they're all in their own well right now, too.
So on that note, if we were to do that, what are we gonna do for a road system? Are we putting blacktop, or are we putting the ground?
Well, that's, you know, I think initially, you probably are gonna, it's gonna be gravel for here, too, so to get a good base, so.
I have no problem with that.
But that works.
My opinion is what I'm thinking, Dan has put a lot of money into our city. I, I think that my own decision would be I'd sell the 18 at the price that we agreed, and then the 12 at 15, that's how I feel.
That's, that feels fair to me, that, like, you know, like, you gotta be able to get, and we see.
You have stuck a lot into our city, and that's what, that's the way I know, but that's only me. You gotta rest, console, that's only me. Paul, I'm gonna go with you then, because he's always the silent one, you're gonna put him right up to it.
Well, I was just. Yeah, just going through the numbers. You know, so. We're, we're selling the 18 at the original cost. We've done, right, yeah, then we we'd be running shy of about $80,000. So between that and 15,000, we would.
Oh, if, yeah.
If we were to sell you everything.
At 30 acres that had the pain, we're 4500.
Right, so we're doing 18 acres at the original cost, our cost is about 80,000, is what we're reducing the cost to be for.
Okay, that, that's what I'm gonna ask.
Yeah. Yeah.
But the event, I have over a solid bag, we're gonna actually put people to work.
Yeah.
And we'll have a guy go out and type something.
And 40 people, I, I, it's, it's the first place that we have out there that has that many workers. And I think that's what it was intended for.
At, once we're fully filled, both 25 to 30, but then there's harvest times where we're what, and a half more people. And so it's a very labor intensive business. We're not talking option, if you're ready.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I read loud and clear, and you guys don't understand anymore.
Well, and a cash deal with Great Rock, so.
The burden of hand, the bush, and all that.
Yeah, but I, at the personal state, I guess, is part of the, the win, right, you know, we're talking about, you're buying the land now, but whenever.
But I, I now have the two, uh, two routes to success. I have a pending license that they just put on for a whole. But there was other rounds that went out, and I'm just, I'm to the point of, I'm like, you know, I'm, I'm, so I have two pathways to success, so we try to speed it up, because it's, it's, you can only imagine.
It's ridiculous.
Well, with 20 cultivators who do what they want, and they have their trade association, and they've run enough guys out of business, they just take more power, and they're burdening it. This gives me the opportunity vertically integrated, and it's only a 15,000 square foot canopy where I'm allowed, all the buildings are at these. It's almost 15, 20,000 square foot buildings, but the growing, the growing area, because you have that processing, you have a lot of drying air, so it's, it's a very labor intensive thing, but it, it puts it's powerful where I get, I become vertically integrated, where I'm not a, you support yourself.
Exactly. Dan, how is it protected, unlike the public, technically, if you're throwing?
The, the, the strip, the state, anything will be indoor, nothing outside.
Okay.
So it's gonna be in the building, but it's one of the biggest things we get to have, at times, total darkness at different times in the plants' cycle. So it's, it's not gonna be anything outside. If there was additional, but I'd love to consider hemp, which is totally different product. I assure everybody, we, or everybody's upset about all the plastic. Something twice the size of Texas is spinning around in the middle of the Pacific. Henry Ford made car bodies out of hemp epoxy and hemp fibers in 42, when it wasn't upfield during the Second World War. And he built cars that ran on hemp oil. So there we are, everyone's wondering, wow, how do we replace this plastic? And, you know, there was.
There's an answer.
Well, the pharmaceutical industry, there was people that benefited from not having hemp as a product. Petrochemical, pharmaceutical, and they just, they ruled the ruse, but finally, it's like, okay, we can plant 40 acres of hemp, don't do anything wrong. But once we start making plastic, and, you know, the land goes, when the plastic acid is all in short, you know, in, in a couple of years, instead of 10,000 years.
I was gonna say, we can have a sidebar session when he's talking, but I, I do wanna hear what Dan will say.
We'll, 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 there's that one.
Okay. Dan, have any sidebars, okay, for just a minute? And can you please say what you'd like to say?
All I'm saying is, I'm just afraid if we sell other things and have them what we want, we are gonna write off more than we're going to, we're gonna have to dip into other plots to build the road. Yes, we're gonna put it rock, but later down the road, we're gonna have to pay for that blacktop, and blacktop, right, it's just, it's still keep.
But we could wait for that, until it was more recent.
No, oh, later in the.
And it would be using, we've been holding this property probably for a long time.
No, I agree with his business, I'm just afraid that if we do it, here down the road, you know, the city's gonna have to.
Wait, what, we don't have to, anyhow.
I understand, we gotta.
Yeah, we're gonna have to sort of rub the end of the.
Yeah. But I mean, isn't that something that we're working at, when we sell something, you gotta take some of that profit and forth the road?
I think when we sell property, all the money has to go to the debt, doesn't it?
Yeah, we have to pay.
Yeah, cannot. Yeah, we have to pay. Yeah.
We can, we can, I will say that years ago.
Okay. And you, there will be purchase agreement, that's what I was suggesting, as you typically have. So what we normally do is, if we don't sell it to you, for you to have the opportunity, just to resell to somebody at a higher price, we decided not to. So if you don't do something, it develops at a certain period of time, which is very, a year, two years, two and a half years, then we have the right to buy it back at the same price.
I'm, I'm fine with that. And the road being, I don't wanna inundate the city with extra builds.
We have to put a road in our. The road, I think, to put in there is advantageous to get people.
That's just.
Okay.
You have a cert, you don't hate this, it's a security thing, there's no, no. I can, I can start putting it together and give Dana, well, fill holes, and we can start getting the survey ready and all that kind of stuff. Let's take a look at it, council, and start moving forward, fill that one.
Sue said, original plus 15 for the, the new, Mike?
I'm good with 30 at the, at the option price that expired on. 12, so 200, 7, 1,000, 540 dollars for the works.
Yeah, that's what I got, okay. Joe?
Read, I'm gonna come to it.
Okay. Yeah. Sue said yes, Paul?
I'd like to see 400.
Maybe somebody that works for him will rent one of your houses.
You gotta throw something.
There you go. Keith, are you on to that?
I'm good.
Okay, so we're, we're good to go, and we have actually a motion, do you want to just scoot back to it? We have a motion on it?
Because we have to have a legal description.
No, we don't have it.
Okay, we got head nods from everyone, we're going forward with this, and we will have.
So, that's exciting, thank you very much.
Goodbye.
Really appreciate it.
We appreciate all the stuff for us.
Are you still open?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. This is the only place I can find Turnet in my entire pod cities, he says, I'll get it for you.
I was wondering that, are you still open?
When are they gonna announce the next round?
It, it's just, they just never hold. That lawsuit, it's like it never ends. We were told this spring, I've actually heard it's gonna be after COVID, so just, it, it never ends, so I have a lawyer in that. An industry where, as I said, I'm not ready to go buy that, so it's just getting too much, so frustrating, so, but that's why I, I'd like to make that period as long as possible, I gotta give it my heft list. It, it's, they, they have, mold is holding out so poorly, every step is lawsuits. I think the last time they were suing, because it was veteran programs, I'm like, what world is that now? It's like, that was, I'm all with the firemen, you gotta connect the point, or who's in it. Well, very good, so, all right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
The next one is the Eslon for dangerous, and that, that was, I, I wanted to line that up, but I want to ask if the council wants to see it first. Dan has been privileged to, looking at them, it's grant writers that are run through our Eslon, that make them a little bit cheaper to us, grant writers are always expensive. He, Dan seen it and seen dollars right away, I looked at it, and I could see dollars the other way going, wow, it could get millions. My question to you is, do you want to see the presentation of what these people can do? It's about 12 minutes, 15 minutes, it would be a Zoom meeting with them, but I didn't want to bring them in unless you were wanting to do it. What is this for, Wendy? It's grant writers, it's grant writers that we can hire through the enterprise zone at a little less expensive rate, they're hourly. And some, some grant writers do it differently, sometimes you have to put up so much, but they are just an hourly base in there. They, they are working for the north, kind of northwest division of Illinois to give us a cheaper, cheaper rate, but you know what? It's, to me, they have, it's all the way across the country, and they have people that are expertise, saying that we want, you know, we're, we're specific in what we want. That's right, they have that specific grant writer that they contact, and that, that person goes after it, because not all grant writers are the grant writers of everything. They're specific, so this way, when you get into a group like this, you have the advantage of getting the best of the best, and they do explain that. And they do explain that in there, and it's just something we could watch if you don't want to. It's just an opportunity that I personally didn't want to pass up, but I I truly want to leave it up to you guys.
The the rates are based on how many hours you use.
Yep.
And it it escalates from there, so the minimum hours is fifty hours, and that's a rate at at one sixty-five. So that that's eighty-two fifty, then it goes up to a hundred hours, it's just fifteen-five, and then it just depends on the hours. It's kind of like my path, right, how many hours we want them to go into.
They just got any form of information that we can read? Yeah, they do, and they also have, like, say, we're looking for dollars for the downtown renovation, they can they can show that instead of. Well, you'd like to talk to them, though. I'd like to read it first and then then they're, okay, I'd be interested, then we'll talk. Yep. I will get all the material. And this comes through Mary Camerano, that's completely self-reasoned, who introduced me to them. But they are a company that's across the United States, so. Anyway, we go on to the boat liquor and food mart business plan, and Vicki Wall has a presentation. We have the presentation that you gave me in our package, so if you would like to comment.
Okay, hello everyone. So I have this place on fifteen ten ten seventy in Clinton. So I have the building, so I was requesting just to be with if I can have a little license there, because I have a plan. Where I'll be happy to. Hold along with liquor and beer wine, so that we have everything just along with. All the convenience you need locally here. So my proposal is within the store, I have the map in the very end, just in this, you want to look at it?
Just on the back?
Yeah, at the back. So I'll have in the proposal, I I'll have food, have pizza, burgers, meals. Along with all the groceries and all the local convenience, whatever we don't have in town, so. General groceries, like all the little bit, if someone needs quickly something like bread, for example. Or milk, or we have we need just everyday, if you think that home, we quickly want to grab our.
Something like a convenience store.
Right, right. And also according to the demand, depending on what local people need, I'll just try to accommodate everything. So, yeah, whatever is needed, we have it here, we don't have to run to do law school at night or in the evening. Just for one thing, so that's the plan. So beginning with that. So after that. The thing is, what I personally think here at night, if I have to go, I have to eat somewhere, most of the places are closed. Early, and we have to go to Clinton, so just going across the bridge for my my own, but I felt living here. In Clinton that we need something where we can go and get quick food, but not just put junk food. We can have something healthy and so we can get a protein, food right there. So that's the main agenda here. So we will be operating a little bit extended hours because we have food, so that every can get, everybody can get food. At least to start with till midnight, and we'll see that the people are asking us to open a little bit later, we can also practice on the chat. And in the future, I also want everything online so that people can just place online orders, also we can do. But that will be our future plan, just to start and see how particularly work and what the demand is. So. Um, along with that, so next is, I already own a building, as I said. I have a plan and I have all the finances, if anybody needs any. Anything from me on that I can I'm ready to provide that. I already have experience, I am working, I had this one store in Clinton. Right now I have another one, and I also have a warehouse. So I am already working two successful businesses, so I will try to provide best customer service. And also one more thing, just depending on the local demand, whatever people prefer here. I will try to accommodate that to along the path. Any questions until now? How long have you owned the building? This building I have over a year now.
You own a business, but when you said.
Yes. Uh, one business I have on bluff, it's Clinton, and also we have a grocery little bit, not too much. Because we have Walmart on the same road, and we have Quick Star right next to us. So, but we still try to accommodate people in uphill, whatever they ask, I just try to accommodate that. And other business I have just across the business, sorry, fridge, I opened in August last year. And it's successfully done, it's called Vehicle Mart, also same kind of business, different convenience. So I was wondering if I can have same concept here, but with food, because here we need food in town, so that's what my main agenda.
Those are the only two you've ever had then, those stores?
Um, here.
In Clinton?
In Clinton, yes, I have another one is a warehouse, it's like the behind my retail store. It's a warehouse, it's a different business. So any questions on that?
Well, I'm in favor of having your food and everything, but not issuing another license. That we're chapped out on, and I have my opinion, I don't want to issue another A license. We have a C license, do you understand that? If you have food, you can get a C license. And but sixty percent of the sale has to be in the food. And but and we have two of those available. Okay, that would do to get you started, but you can't sell packaged liquor or nothing. It's only a drink. It's not packaged liquor?
No, no.
So just a bar inside with a restaurant, it's great. Well, I approved her for an A, just because I think the more businesses that we have in town is the best. And that I. She has a wonderful business plan, she's already had two businesses. And I think it would be great if we do not have some place that somebody can grab some food until midnight. The police officers were asking me for that specifically, and I think that's an answer. And I think if you take the liquor out of her equation, it it sets her up to fail, so. That's my opinion. And I hate to turn down businesses.
This is just packaged, right?
Yes, I I in my plan, I have packaged like retail. So I'm more towards retail because.
Then it's a class A. Okay, so you're not going to serve in-house?
Yeah, that's what the plan is, yes, not to serve in-house.
So it's an A one?
Yes.
Okay.
It could be, is there the cost to start at one million dollars?
Yes.
Where is the where is the million dollars out there?
Oh, no, the building itself I bought.
No, yeah, but it says the cost to start the operation.
Yes, I'll tell you, I can. Yes, that's what I'm saying, if you need any breakdown, I can get you that.
I would like to see.
Yes, and also if you need my financial statements, I'm ready to go with that. Because right now I just liquor part, I have three hundred thirty thousand worth in my store. So plus whatever we all the equipment we will have, just to put the walk-in cooler, I just started a new business. It was forty thousand, and the payment I did is sixty thousand, so just hundred thousand on two things, I just the cost of it.
And also Wendy is gonna bring more jobs to you guys as well, she's gonna have to have employees.
Food, window.
So she's gonna have to have all of that, so that's also gonna bring more to your area as well, is more employment, which Illinois needs. So what do you plan on selling, more food or more liquor?
So food is always there, so along with that, someone needs liquor, we can provide that to them.
So C one would work better for you. Oh, it can't be, oh, it can't. You're not gonna have a sit-down in there, no dining area. You can come in and take the food out, but you won't be a no-dine.
That's why you have dry food, someone wants, you can just use dry food and take the food.
I thought some people in Wardmont, and they're not in favor of their store, and. Word vote, I go, so I don't know, I'm voting that way, because that's who I represent. It was a nice presentation, I appreciate it.
No problem.
And I appreciate you starting.
I'm happy, I'll just keep coming, asking again, I'll also talk to local people, because people who talk to me, they told me, they go over there and they told me, we need to add customers in the area, so that's why I'm here.
I think, I think, I think one of the people above us, another liquor store, is the whole of, I'd love to see you open your business, I mean, it'd be great to have a restaurant there or something like that, or even a convenience store, it'd be awesome.
Yeah, I mean, I'm telling you, if I have food plan, I that's not in my agenda, that I want to go go for it, let it everything. Or just to leave that storage for now, so you guys maybe rethink about it next time again.
I have a question for you, so I have a Honda four shop. Are you going to come and say that someone can't have another Honda four shop? What's the difference? What's the difference? It's a business.
It is a business.
It is a business.
It is a business.
And and that is not ever regulated, everybody can come and do whatever they choose, this is America.
No, you have to be regulate liquor licenses, have, we do, and. From what I can tell, amongst my colleagues, there's not a lot of energy around changing the amount of licenses that we're willing to grant. And there are eight of us sitting here that represent thirty-five hundred people in this town, and I've had conversations just like Jeff has with constituents, and. They agree with how we're doing things, and.
Well, I can't just those things, and and I I have to, I want to, Melanie and Manre are going to come here. And ask for a liquor license for profits. Now, you know, I.
If a class C liquor license is available for them, I fully support that, because we have that type of license available. Then I'm not in favor of it, and I'm not in favor, but they don't, do you, do you want a class A? No, you're after a class C, so at that point, it's moot. They are after a class C, which we have available, which has been available within the structure that the city is operated under. And absolutely, if they want a class C license, we have one available, let's let's support that. And I also appreciate you coming and presenting, and I just, I.
I'm just a resident of the city, has has been asking last time, I also came. And just try to help city, but I can't until unless I have a business, I keep myself restricted. So that's all right, obviously, keep trying, I have my building, maybe in the future you change your mind. Thank you for.
Well, we just heard, so we're gonna, don't we have a. Now, we are on to seven, approval of February twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, council minute. They have a motion, please. And a second? And they have roll call. Changes, any changes, additions? Now I need roll call, thank you, Dan. Now, Alderman King.
Yes.
Banker. Mass, Van Campen.
Yes.
Peter Hawk.
Yes.
Hunt.
Yes.
Brondike.
Yes.
Ben Zudin. I know.
I knew, I knew there's. Did you put it all from the mass mass that she was at?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, Mike, I should have waited. We're we're on to the approval of the February twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and all we need is a.
Yes.
Very good. On to, they have a motion to approve the February twenty-second bill list that we presented. And are there any questions for Dan? Or? And may I have roll call, please? Banker.
Yes.
Brondike.
Yes.
Peter Hawk. Van Campen.
Yes.
Hunt. Mass, Ben Zudin.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Very good, and we go on to current business items for consideration, discussion, or action. And on A, we have a request from Danny O's and from Manre and Melanie Galen. To change the ordinance that now exists, that they cannot sell liquor in their bar until noon. We would like to change the ordinance to nine o'clock and have it match the retail. Retail can start selling at nine o'clock, and so they're requesting a change in that ordinance to match that.
I'd make a motion to approve the ordinance change.
Well, there we go, I was gonna tell them they had to say yes. I said, I have to say yes, yes, but okay.
And I was for the for the sale of food, so.
Thank you. Very good, and now I need roll call, please. King.
Yes.
Banker.
Yes.
Mass, Van Campen.
Yes.
Peter Hawk.
Yes.
Hunt.
Yes.
Brondike.
Yes.
Ben Zudin.
Yes.
Okay, we go on to a motion to approve the class A liquor license for Vicki Wall. As liquor commissioner, this, the mayor has approved it forward to the council, we will now have a motion. Oh, is that what we have to do?
We have to change the number.
Okay.
So this would be a motion.
So then, so then we're gonna. Okay. Okay.
Add one class, so if there's no motion, and second.
It does. Okay. If that's died because of no motion, go forward. And so there will be no action. Okay. Now we get to the CBCC impact program, discussion and approval for the city of Fulton to make a monetary donation program. Um, last time they came here at the last meeting, they were, um. Anyway, they were asking for a donation, and I think as us being part of the Northwest Division, and what that impact is going to do for our Northwest Division, I think we need to consider some amount. Does anybody else have any discussion on it at all? What amount are they looking at, anything? I mean, even if we gave them a thousand dollars, it would show us, it would show them that we support them. And I know we're tight right now, but that program is going to impact this area immensely in the future. And so I just want to at least say, you know what, try your best.
How many Fulton students do we have, I think, didn't she say twenty-five?
Oh, we have, we have seventy-five.
Seventy-five kids?
Yes.
That participate this?
And it was just Fulton and Prophet Town that got to participate in it this time, and it's going great guns. I mean, some of the kids already have the requirements done, and they have all year to do it. And it's such a wonderful thing to offer children who don't have the capability to go on to college, that, that little bit, if they give back to the community, it teaches them that, it, it raises the bar in education for our area, I know that some, um, factories aren't coming to this area because they can't supply the, the workers. We need this in our area, so, you know, just, I.
Can we give this a thought and come back to it, or we can make a decision tonight, I'm more sorry.
It's just something that I didn't think we talked about, she presented, but I think we should be supportive in some way.
If we would say we did a thousand dollars there, where would that come out of?
Probably if we think it out, probably.
Can we just take it out of general fund, that thousand? Uh, it's not a lot, I mean, they're talking about a twenty.
Is this gonna be, uh, would it be yearly or?
No, I think we should need to do it just as we see how it goes, but, you know, they presented to us several times, and like I said, we had a million dollar donor here from four, I think the city needs to just at least say, good job. And I think that would at least say it's our support.
You've got questions.
Sure.
Um, I just, I mean, I agree, I don't know, is that our role here? And if we do this, does that open can, Pandora's box for everybody asking something from us? Is that our role? I don't want to.
Well, that's what she came.
Private, they're looking for private, why not?
Why, she didn't ask that last time, when she came, she asked.
They're not, my, where to get.
Right, right.
But my thing is, I don't know if that's our role here, to make donations, and we start doing that, do we get open Pandora for everybody else? I, I'm throwing it out.
Yeah.
Well, you had a legal support, we do, yeah.
Well, we can think about it for a month, and I can put it on next time unless you're really deciding.
I don't want to share a postpartum, I'm passing the caution.
Yeah, well, let's think about it, yeah, and bring it back to the table, and right, we're gonna move on to junior achievement day for proclamation, they sent that to me, asking for April seventh.
Just to support.
It's just a support. To say that we are supportive of junior achievement, and we will recognize that day, so make that.
I'll say.
Okay, and is there any discussion or question? And we just need roll call. Peter Hawk.
Yes.
Banker.
Yes.
Mass. Van Zuiden.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Hunt.
Yes.
Brondike.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Pass to go on to the solar energy, we already have completed that. Tammy, you have the, the motion, and that is passed, so we go on to the city administrator search, this is just for, for me, I would love to have two people on that committee, and then we find, um, a couple of people from the community, is there anyone wanting to volunteer? Everybody's got roll call. This is for, for the new city administrator, when Dan, you know, you're in May half from that, it's gonna take a while. It's, at least you could start to, you know, get it together, you know how it is with meetings, it takes a long time.
People would wanna wait until after, see if there's any people on the council. But I think this is, I'm up in here, so I'm up. You're a year longer than I am here.
Just a little over. Just a little over here.
I care about you, I won't be here, so I'll, I'll see this now. Not that I'm pushing you over into the process, I just, yeah.
Everybody's saying like?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, prove employee bonus for the federal relief funds, the amount is in motion, yes.
Again, that was just put on there again for your consideration, you don't have to do anything, but for monetary reasons, I need to know.
We, we talked about.
If I may, we did.
Yeah. You guys brought this, uh, um, keys, and I supported it, and I can support it, we got a, a amount of like a thousand dollars for full-time, five hundred for part-time, always.
That's me.
Yeah. And this is all from art funds, correct, Dan?
Yes.
Okay.
And this would be just the people that worked for us at that time.
Yes.
And we're not going to search down the people that have left.
No.
Right.
It's just the ones we still have. Current employees. Would be the number.
We need a motion to approve current employees that worked during the twenty-twenty COVID and issue them one thousand dollars for full-time and five hundred dollars for part-time.
I like that motion, I love it.
And any other discussion?
Well, I will just
Oh.
Say I'm kind of a, in a position where, you know, we just had healthcare increase coming up this year again. Bonuses come and are forgotten quickly, um, I would probably vote no, but assuring employees that we are covering healthcare, um, increases, so they are guaranteed that we are not pressing that money. However, this is coming out of. Yeah, it's, yeah, but it's still our money that we're. Well, this is one, this is what was suggested, one. Yeah, yeah.
And I don't think, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, how many employees did it affect, we, we did that?
Yeah, we brought thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
How much did we get so far? Two, two twenty, three, twenty-three thousand, no, there are more coming? No, there's.
Another two.
So I mean, I don't think it's hurt us at all.
I made a motion, it was seconded, that's the discussion.
So it doesn't come out of our budget? No, that won't be.
No, I read the whole, but we had a first and a second.
Yeah.
We did.
Well, you said, you said it comes to the budget. Well, the next one really is. Yeah. That's like.
Tammy, you got a first and a second.
I did.
All right, and then we need roll call, please. Mask is not here, Van Zuiden.
Yes.
Banker.
Uh, since it's not coming out of our budget, it gets.
Brondike.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Peter Hawk.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Hunt.
Yes.
Okay, with that promotion, yes, we go on to approve employee Christmas bonus, again, amount to be discussed and a motion.
And this was brought, this was brought up, well, that's why I needed to, okay, sorry about that. And this was brought up before for discussion, and so that's why I put it on there, and since next month we all pass the budget, we need to know if the number is true, if you so choose.
When we give.
If you choose to change.
A hundred for full-time and fifty for part-time.
Two, two hundred.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And this is something we discussed in December, with bonuses, and everybody wanted to wait until the king, so we could put it on the budget, so it would be in the budget. We, we've, we've all discovered that two hundred don't get nothing, and we're in a base.
We need a motion and a second.
We need an amount to go with the motion. Can't make the motion without the law, that's the thing. I'd make a motion to approve this bonus, maybe a lot of two hundred dollars, one hundred dollars. Two hundred dollars for full-time employees, one hundred dollars for part-time employees.
And that keeps it the same as we think it sounds, is there a second?
Okay, I'll second that motion.
We can discuss. Yeah.
I did, it's got, it should go up, we haven't changed this in a long time. You know, we've got valuable employees.
We do, but what's their health insurance going up to that we're gonna have to act?
Ten, yeah, about ten thousand. From the one side, we hope that one don't go up at all.
Hard to say, I've been calling up for six years. And I have a show of hands on who gets a bonus that works. We have four. All neck. So how hard to work, right?
Introduce.
I just know that there's lots of companies that no longer, with, my husband works for Alliance, ComEd, all of those places, they don't give them anymore, because they don't, we used to get a turkey, first we got money, now we got turkey.
The company still gives.
Do they?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Do they, employees?
Oh, yeah.
How much do they get?
You don't wanna go.
I, I don't understand what that's got to do with.
Well, I'm just.
We're not a price.
No, we're.
Trying to compare it to a price.
But we are a company, we are a business, we are a business. And I'm, I'm, I'm just putting it up there, I, I think it's generous that, at a hundred and two hundred. For our business.
I mean, to me, it's a bonus, same thing every year, it's just really an extension of salary, you got. It's not, I but, yeah, actually, I think we pay it every year, so, I mean, I, if we're gonna say that's part of the salary, then I kind of be key that probably been a little bit of inflation.
So you're thinking it should go up?
Well, we, I agree, two hundred dollars. We're gonna keep doing that. You better put right in your salary. We, you have a motion in a second on the table. Which we could change the month, and let, have to be approved by Mike.
Yes, Mike made the motion. So let's, let's go through his motion first and see how we go, so we have motion on the table, discussed, roll call, please. Peter Hawk. No. Banker.
That's, so that's, so we're just, we're going on his.
On his, two hundred and one hundred.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, this is not here, Van Zuiden.
Yes.
King. Hunt.
No.
Brondike.
No.
Van Campen.
No.
Okay, now we can, you can, you may make a different motion. I'd make a motion that be three hundred and a hundred and fifty. Motion's on the table at three hundred and a hundred, three hundred for full-time, a hundred and fifty for part-time, or a Christmas bonus. May I have a motion to accept that?
You said.
Oh, you, you did the, okay, I'm sorry, second.
Also.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? He, I said, Mike second. Three hundred and one fifty is what's on the table.
And feel better about discussing bonuses after our labor contracts are worked out, we might not have time to deal with them. That's just a safe proof, but just throw that out there.
If you go back, we had to wait until the carpenters, which is what it's like. The one in July, the first of June, we're talking next year.
No, and I don't wanna do that, I'm just saying.
But we still can make the decision, yeah, if we've been, right before Christmas.
We can budget.
He doesn't want to, he started the vote board, which is this.
Right.
So we're in the vote on, pretty much in the budget. Because always changing, December, or whenever you could say. Which it's going to be, and so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you are.
We are three hundred and one. We have to attach it on.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but, uh, who's gonna bring that up? Up over, over, over again.
No one will lower it.
No, I mean, it'll just be brought up, I'd rather just decide.
Okay. Well, what's on the table right now is there's a motion and a second for three hundred and one fifty, so let's do roll call. Peter Hawk.
Yes.
Banker.
No.
Mass. Van Zuiden.
Yes.
King.
No.
Hunt.
No.
Brondike.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Pass, four, three, it's passed, okay. All right, now you want to put in the day. Now go on to the budget overview and discussion.
Everybody's a book, they're right?
No, no, I'm gonna turn them over here.
Oh.
Did they, did you bring your? Yeah. The budget. Mine is in my office, not in the camp.
Yeah, it's due right here.
Oh, okay, thank you. Where are we starting then?
Page ten. What do you do? Oh, man, a little surgery this morning.
Well, I'm sure it got bad. Dan, are you gonna explain? Are we waiting, we're still waiting.
I'm going tomorrow. The mass requires. My homework has such good tests, has been no longer required in passing at school, but yeah, it was on the C C. We're, we're gonna get to the bottom here, page ten, at the very top. And what you're looking at is, we, we went through the budget at the budget workshop, and this is the, I'm gonna give you the deficit. The first number in, under category, the line, column F, would be the amount of revenue we have, one million, six hundred forty-seven oh ninety-six. Expenditure of one million, seven oh four oh thirty, and that, that, that's one that gets us at fifty-six thousand, nine thirty-four of deficit this year. Again, you know, we're still getting idea of what this is gonna cost us here, which I think is around forty-five thousand, roughly. Is our estimate of what's coming in for the HVAC here. So, so now we're really looking at about eleven thousand, twelve thousand dollars deficit to start. Okay, which we're gonna have to figure out, but we, we do get, we did get the answer for this four percent increase that is in there. I did plug in a four percent increase for salaries, because I've been in the trend over the last six years, actually. So that's where we're at, starting, this is what we need to overcome. If the council decides to do the HVAC system, that would be a reserve, one year, one-time cost. The other eleven dollars, we have to, you know, I, I think we can go through, probably try and figure out how to cut some of the costs out of a million seven budget. Think we can get down, get that balance fairly easy. Anything additional, which we're gonna talk about here in a little bit, because of the contract with the police department, we'll, we'll be on top of that. So that's just something to keep in mind. What you didn't have are the, the special funds, and they pretty much, well, they're all balanced, they'll be in the next few pages once we got the insurance fund. As you'll see, as you go through this, and this is on the same page at the bottom, all everything's column F, is there's, there are some money gonna go into some reserves. We have a little bit in on insurance fund, about thirteen thousand, a quick couple pages, and we'll do this very quick. So if you have any questions, please let me know. Social Security, basically, it's pretty well balanced out in and out, so that there isn't much extra there. DUI fund, that's just a, they get X amount from their DUIs if they, and it isn't much, you know, they get DUI, it's very small amount they actually get. They only get, looking at about fifteen hundred dollars there, which then they can spend. Motor fuel, Eric has budgeted about a hundred seventy thousand dollars. And as you'll see in the rebuild Illinois seven, that bond seventeen zero zero three four four, there's seventy-six thousand four seventy-one we got from rebuild Illinois. We can use that for general maintenance, so we're putting that in there this year. Has to be used by twenty twenty-five. So it can be used for bad, it's all that kind of stuff. The hundred seventy thousand, it just does maintenance, you know, and that's, that's about it. We don't get a whole lot extra. Rock, if we do the road, you know, we may throw some rock in there, something like that. He's doing three hundred feet this year, additional to the street down there at Project Stride, so that'll come out of those. And then the expenditure side, that, that's the end there, so he's behind with the, with the rebuild Illinois. Hopefully, at the end of the year, we'll have a few extra funds you can add with, put in the reserves for motor fuel download. Economic development, this year, of course, we redid the bonds, so it is paying for itself. As you can see, there used to be a transfer up till this year, about forty-two thousand dollars, we were taking out a general fund to balance that payment of those bonds. And that, that property that we have down there. I happen to do that. Just kind of, that's nice. Down to one, that's, that's what doesn't generate quite as much, or hadn't, I'm sorry, tip one is the generator, that's where Dan's, Dolan's property and everything is. The revenue, we're looking there at two hundred and twelve, we do, we did find out recently, in the tip one, we also paid back, we, we paid back twenty percent of that property tax number, but we also paid back twenty percent of the sales tax. So the recreational cannabis, we, we returned some checks recently at about twenty percent. Now, over a good solid year, I, I think we're, our, we're still gonna be looking pretty good as far as the revenue. It's gonna take probably somewhere between December before we see that full solid year in there, but right now, we're up to almost eighty thousand. Tip two, it's just getting going still, so we're not seeing a whole lot there, as much there. I think we will see more as we go. Forty thousand's starting to get up and running. We have Chase down there, and then we'll Dan possibly maybe moving in as well.
And Darwin's for sale again, right?
I guess, oh, that Darwin, this building is for sale, so.
Well, that's a possibility of even, you know, something to generate.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, the building, the business was, he kept the other half of the property, I don't know if he's now building.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, he, he, or at least he's, it's not for sale with that.
Okay.
That, you know, at least it, it wasn't on that for sale.
Well, he separated it.
He did, we did, yeah. Probably the latter.
Yep, it was.
Capital projects, that's actually where the bond shows up for the payments, and shows three, three quarter percent. That's, that fund thirty-one. Nothing in thirty-two, some capital projects that would come out of there. Then there's the twenty nineteen bond, and as you will remember, in, under three, three, zero, zero, three, nine, seven, we're on page fifteen, by the way, is eighty thousand dollars, it comes out of oh, one, four, one, nine, nine, three, that's Street, and the council decided that's where that money would come from, to pay that money. The other forty thousand, we'll get here two minutes, one thirty-six, and that's the gain, so, and that's, that we paid up on there. And that's that last bond that we did for Street, Streetwood. Quick side note, we did have a good bid on our A Street project, so we don't, Ford Brothers, and, you know, we, we don't have Star Day yet, assuming they would be, you know, coming in pretty soon to get all the documents, so. Fund thirty-six, and that's page sixteen, that's what I was just telling you, so that's, you can see the video gaming fees are there. And then on page seventeen, at the top, is the forty-five thousand going to be paid to that bond. On the water sewer, now, we, we did do our cost of living, four percent increase there, that's kind of deep up, so we don't get behind those years, we do that for several years. I'm gonna let Eric, most of these, ladies didn't change. The capitals are really within the next page, on eighteen are the big money items, they get seen coming out of here, and I'll let Eric go ahead and explain those, and I'll tell you what we have to pay out there for bonds.
As we're going through our capitals, we have ninety thousand for equipment, and that'll pay for the backup that we still have, we're still paying on that. And that'll also go towards the new five fifty that we just purchased, that's part of that payment. We do have thirty thousand in here for a new F two fifty, we're probably gonna have to order that, because it's like a twenty-six week lead time before we get something. So that just puts it in there for us for next year, and then Streets will cover the rest of that cost for the purchase of a truck. Our biggest fund out of there, a lot of our money's going to our rebuilt infrastructure, which is our P B R pump, our P B R lift station down at the wastewater plant. That's roughly thirty thousand dollars, and we have water tower cleaning, we've got some smaller projects at the water plant. Just trying to keep things on the up and up down there, so that's for our infrastructure, and then we also have twenty thousand in for our, our fire hydrants. So we're hoping to do seven fire hydrants this year, and then keep going six to seven fire hydrants per year. And they, they average roughly thirty-five hundred dollars a piece, and then, you know, if you need something else on top of it. So that, that pretty much takes us through all our capitals for this coming year.
How many fire hydrants do we have in there, you know? Oh, I just thought you knew all the.
Not off the top of my head.
Dude, I think it's like two cents.
Oh, okay.
There's quite a few, and there's, in, that end of town has a lot of older fire hydrants that we have a lot of issues with, so that's kind of where we're gonna concentrate a lot of our time, is down that way, trying to get those hydrants upgraded to the newer styles. And then, obviously, if something happens throughout town, we'll take care of those as they, as they pop up. But that seems to be the worst section down as far as fire hydrants go, and they leak after we try and shut them down.
That's the oldest part of town.
Yeah, so that's, that's primarily where all the new hydrants are gonna go to town that way.
Yeah, twenty thousand, we've had fifteen in there for years, they really don't go that far, thirty-five thousand, I could, yeah, and a line stop, probably valves and all that kind of stuff. Of course, you know, we need fire tubes, so it's really, I On a fire hydrant, we, we have some in there, they're nineteen oh eight, so I'd like though, I'd like to think the newer ones are better built.
Forty years, replace them all, seven years.
Yeah, yeah, well, we, we don't wanna replace them all.
Not one year.
Yeah, we, I, we have a lot of good ones out there. The south end, like you said, that's, that's the, that's the first end. Next, anything, I can stop them, and if there are any questions, I know they'll go through it fairly fast. Okay, and, and obviously, you know, Dan, Mike and I, we sit down, look through these quite a bit. And I know they got pretty good grasp on everything, and anybody has any questions, they're pretty tall, that's never a problem, we have to get to talk about. These, this is an enterprise fund, our, you know, garbage is an enterprise fund, Marines enterprise funds, you know, they're, they're, they're run like a business. The general funds, obviously, the municipal side of it, it's, it's, it's passed. These are prepaid for service, and, you know, we give you good, good service, that really is water, when you flush, think of what that is. Here are our garbage fund. And that one too. Now that we have, we have the new garbage cans and that, and you're all very prepared of that, good or bad, but that, actually, we get, we get a little bit of extra money for the administration of that, so with doing that, over the years, we were fortunate that it filled up to about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and many of you remember that, because the deracial took a bunch of it. And at that time, our reserves were real low, and that's, we were fortunate to have that one. Yes, it was, it very much was, so we're slowly trying to put that back in, so ten thousand of that, that's the administration, you know, the girls doing the bills and all that. Then next is the water sewer, I'm gonna stop a second, go back up to water sewer on page eighteen, and you'll see payments that come out here, so starting at nine, twenty, nine ninety-three, which is depreciation, and that's the money that we put aside for future repairs and water sewer. We, we're gonna have about seven hundred thousand dollar water tower painting coming up, which you want the money for, but we are gonna look at a couple grants along with that. But obviously, you don't want to complete all your funds, so as, as we move forward, and it has other needs, so, you know, we, we have to pay out, which is more important. The tower's twenty-two years old now, so yeah, at that point, we've done a very good job, I think, of maintenance on it. And so the very next one is EPA fund that we have to, we pay for Fund Fifty-nine, which will be coming up. Bond and interest also will be, you, you'll be seeing that, you'll see that in there. And now, the bond and interest, that goes paying the bonds for the new plant that we're down there with. So if you look through here, there's a lot of money Water Sewer has to pay for, a lot of things, other than just, you know, capitals that we need here, another thing that they have to pay for, that we've done in the past is what else, so.
But it's holding its own.
It is holding its own, we, we, I, I'd hate to see it get, us getting back to the point where, because I, several of you were on board, I think we did a percent increase, and it's not, it's hard to swallow when you start getting behind and you can't afford it, because this one, there's nowhere to go to with this.
Well, the small increments, it's not, like you said, it's not a big hit, people don't increment all.
Yeah, people with the relation, we don't wanna hit them all a lot of times, we don't wanna target them no more than what half the and still provide good service, and I think our water system is really good, no matter what damage. Then, then at the bottom there, you'll see that water bond, you'll see in that second line where it transferred from that nine ninety-five, so that's where it transferred in. This is where it shows your pay, you know, it goes, so it's transferred down here, and then we pay it out, back out to that, that farm. Or to that, that. Okay, so now, now we're on to the water sewer depreciation, and we also show where that money goes to. And there's no money, you'll see some, on page twenty, there's no money coming back out of there, and then in your treasures report, it'll show you how much we've had put in over the years. And there's a treasury report that we brought together, we, you just correlate these first numbers, okay, fifty-five, you go to your fifty-five, it'll show you exactly how much money we have there. Marine fund. Marine fund, Eric, go ahead and do that one.
So, we didn't increase our slip rentals this year, we are increasing them coming into next year. So, that hopefully gives us a little bit more income. Our fuel sales were up, and hopefully they'll, will stay that way. We are hoping to dredge it this spring, assuming the water comes up, we need water to come up, and we're gonna get a dredge in there to actually do anything. So, we, we do have money budgeted in there for dredging, and roughly twenty thousand, roughly, roughly fifty thousand total to dredge, so hopefully we can get some good dredging done. But like I said, unfortunately, we need the water to come up. It's kind of counterintuitive, you think you want the water low, but they, everybody actually wants the water up, because it's easier to get the water jet out. So, hopefully, we can get that taken care of, and that'll help us out a lot, and then we can start doing winter storage again. So, and also with that, we are, we do have the arena building rented, so that's an extra income that we haven't had in the last couple of years. So, that'll be, that'll be a nice addition for us this year. There's really no big projects, other than dredging that are gonna go on down there this year. We're gonna rock a parking area, just for some added apartment down there. That's, that's about it for, for projects at the arena. We are looking at doing some onto boat storage in winter time, hopefully generate a little bit extra revenue, but we're still in the, the force of that. Most of what it is, is, what is in this budget is just maintenance items, just one little bit of a.
And you talked about the dredging, and so, spring is going to be your ultimate, do you, do you have a choice? I mean, you have something picked, and someone.
Well, we have, we have a contractor lined up.
That's your opportunity.
Well, luckily, he's the same guy doing the, the foot arena, so when he's doing that one, you jump over to take care of this one.
Awesome.
But, I also heard that last fall, and the water showed up, so. Hopefully, I'm gonna, hopefully, we'll get your, and the water will rise up, and we get it in there and get it dredged out, bigger structure.
And not rise to.
Yeah, 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 it's a, it's a very great line, how much we want to come up.
Yeah, and getting them guys mobilized, that, that can eat up a job, we've spent fifteen thousand dollars just to get them mobilized here. So, if we can catch them, maybe back in ourselves. So, the next funds down here, at the arena, is water and sewer. Now, these are bond and reserves. On the back of your, the second page of your reserves, which is in the front of your book, again, these numbers correlate with these down here. Now, we have bond reserves, and we have some water sewer operations, which are not usually worn. They, they were set up back when the bonds were put there, we had to have X amount in reserves for the bonds. So, in talking with the auditors, these are, these are funds that are usable down the road, along with the three hundred forty-four, forty-three thousand we have in depreciation now, which will be another hundred that's gonna appear, correct, in next year. Along with that unrestricted funds, they are usable. I just want everybody to be aware of that, I keep telling them every time we talk, because if you need be, if there's something happens, you have those available to be put towards, or a general wing, you know, that tower, you know, somehow it failed, that could be a. That's, that's basically it, you have some incomes and stuff, capital projects, that you have to have in there, the I E P A loan. That transfers from nine ninety-four that we talked about, it just shows here. We have to put it here, so you can see it, and then it goes, the revenue goes in, and then we pay it out, and it shows the principal of interest. And that's almost exactly to the dollar, pretty close to the dollar, there's not a whole lot left over in those funds, just paying for the cost. EPA loan. I don't think we're using anything after that, it looks like everything, vehicle replacement of the duty weapons. That's something we are gonna do this year, the police, and even, when you guys seize a vehicle, then it goes to auction after a certain amount of time. How long, you have any other years?
It's either a year or eighteen months.
Okay, so, so if they had a, I think it was a truck, and a BMW, the BMW we just received, I think, eleven thousand dollars for. So, what we wanna do is be able to put it like a duty weapon, and most every other town around us, pretty much every town, provides a duty weapon, so then they would issue the weapon to the officer, the officer is, is use that weapon, as long as he's an officer here. At least, he turns it back in. Seems like a pretty good deal, that way, they're not having to purchase their own weapons, and they, it's a consistent thing, and everybody has same weapons. They're shooting, they're using the same rounds. Or abandon that, okay, so that, that number there will change, but that's dependent on their money coming in. And they have another truck going in, so they're probably gonna have a fair lot, amount of money coming in there. It'll be up to the council whether your discretion as to how they spend it, so. We'll give you advice on what that is. Please and down, this is what the base account gives them every year, and it looks like they're getting about eight thousand this year. One of those in interest and those two things, you know, we're just, no, it's a good figure, maybe.
They're late, they just didn't like, put that to the freeze or whatever, so that.
And that's really the end of it. Where that's starting, unused funds, oh, the Martin House, I'm sorry, they do get that one every year. That, that we do not keep track of, we, this money comes into the city, but it goes to the Martin House, and they, but they do give you budget sheets periodically.
There's, there's one in the back.
All right, that's it, we're, that.
Because it's getting late, let's go on to reports, and most of them were written, as far as most people met. The minutes were in there, so unless anyone has any questions for any of these committees, Dan or Mike, I don't know off the fingernails, but you just now. Okay. Anything to report from that? No. All right, very good, that way we'll save a little time, because everybody's with their parks, Marina have theirs, so that would, I, going on to mayor's report, the only thing I have to say is, if you had, if you got your economic statement, don't forget to turn that in. If that desk could be turned on.
Mikes?
I saw.
Did you, did you send yours?
Did.
And Harley's is the only one, you sent it off, that's, we're all good.
Okay.
Did you notice they've changed directions?
Was.
Yeah. So, I, now, the first two questions are very significant, they're not like, there's no question like it was last year.
I knew that it was strange, but what is.
They're identical to the lead. They're not. First one is where you get income, and then what your assets are, there's exclusion of what assets you wanna report.
Right, no.
You almost have, you gotta get to here. All you do is get a high amount, that, that, or, you know, you, there's a good article, and it's very significant.
All right, so, any Alderman's reports? City administrator's report.
This is the.
Okay. Chief of police report, Nick did a nice, letters in there, do you have any things to add? All right, how it works?
Just as I submitted to you guys.
Okay. And the tourism report is in there from Leslie, that's working out well, the historical society, that's also in there, new business, does anybody have anything?
I do have one.
Sorry?
I, you know, I've talked to Nick a little bit about it. For not even, not even quoting the cost of it.
I'm sorry, purchasing what?
I decided to purchase his vehicle for another undercurrent vehicle, because he, he was looking it up, it's going for sixty thousand right now, and he's willing to just give it, or sell it to us for quoting the cost. So, it'll be like thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three. And already, and it's already equipped with everything, so that right there is gonna save us a bunch of money. It's already outfitted for lights.
I've actually had this conversation with Nick, and it's not, we don't have money for that, we're already over that, I, I didn't, I didn't hear nothing more, man. Okay, then I'll, never mind about that.
Okay, okay, we go on to close session, to discuss personnel sale of property, F R B negotiation, and litigation. And we need to go up, please, did you get it, Tammy?
I did.
Hunt?
Yes.
Meter box?
Yes.
Banker?
Yes.
Mass? Ben Hampton?
Yes.
King? Ron Dyke?
Yes.
Van Zuiden?
Yes.